We'll call to order the common council meeting on March 23rd at 7:31. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To your honor, for this chance, for our nation, under God, in this law, for this justice law. All right, roll call, please.
Alder Ratafrada.
Yes.
Alder Clouter. Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Krausey.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Schroeder.
Here.
Alder Strassman.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, thank you. I know we've got a number of people here for public appearances and non-agenda items. Just a reminder that you have three minutes to speak about whatever it is you want to speak about. Scott, who would you like to go first? All right, Bill, go ahead when you're ready.
Okay, my name is Beltenki. I live at 3030 Woods Edge Way. I'm a resident of Pittsburgh and Seminole Village for more than 19 years. I'm here to speak about the proposed landscape plan for the area adjacent to the retention pond at the northeast corner of Highway PD and Seminole Highway. Most of the council members will recall that I and a couple of other residents from Seminole Village were here last October to speak about this project and to lend our support to it. You should also recall that we were told that the project was delayed and could not move forward until a site survey was performed and that once the survey was done, a concept plan would be done sometime between November 2020 and February 2021. When I checked with Bill Balki in early January, I was told, quote, "We were able to get the survey shots last week," meaning late December, "and received some leads on data libraries for landscape software renderings." Most of the staff were off during the last half of December, so we are now looking to take that information and begin to move forward with some options for plans this month. To me, that meant sometime in January. I asked for periodic updates on the progress of the software renderings and stated that if I didn't hear from him, I would contact him in early March to find out if things were on schedule and to get another update. I did not hear from him, so I emailed him on March 8th and heard back on March 15th, when he responded, quote, "Since the last response from the city, we had a resignation in the department that required the project manager to take on those additional responsibilities of the departed staff. I regret to say that not much progress has been made to take the data gathered from December and incorporate it into drawings. The new hire will start next week, meaning March 22nd, and we are working on delegating some of those duties to allow the engineer to work on this project. The project involves the creation of sightlines from different viewpoints and figuring out the type of placement of which vegetation can be used to create the screening elements desired on that corner. I return this evening to communicate my frustration with the lack of progress with regard to this project and my concern that this project won't result with trees and shrubs in the ground this spring as previously promised. I don't want to be sitting here in the fall of 2021 or spring of 2022 still waiting for this landscape project to be completed. In May of 2020, on Mother's Day weekend, I watched the complete deforestation of this corner. I understand the reasons for the extension of the retention pond and support it completely. I think it's time for the city of Pittsburgh to live up to the promises that they made and complete the project this spring. We have lived on this busy corner for going on 20 years. We have had to put up with a lot of traffic noise, but had the compensation of a green space that at least screened.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but you're at the three-minute mark. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you to Alder Ratafrada for her support.
All right, who else would you like to go to? Next, Scott. All right, Jonathan, go ahead.
All right, sorry about that. I am here. I live on Rose Ellen Avenue, just south of McKee Farms Park, and I am here to speak on the water and drainage issues. The city will be hopefully embarking on a study of the multifaceted issue around high water tables, poor drainage, poor storm sewer capacity. You know, there's a lot of different elements to this. And there will be several of my neighbors here speaking on this. We have a memo provided to us by Bill Balki, and I think my high-level concern with what we've seen so far is that it only focuses on one single part of it, of the problem. And for many of us, it likely won't do much to alleviate our issues. For me personally, yeah, I'm kind of second to last in downhill slope of water flow before it hits Cheryl. And it really slows down in the back of my property and just trickles away across the next lot to Cheryl. And I know that's the case on the other side of Rose Ellen. I'd also add that my sump pump runs all the time year-round, and it's pumping water out of the ground. It's not a surface water issue. So I am here to voice some concerns about the limited scope of the proposed study. And this issue affects hundreds of people all across, at least the south side of McKee Farms Park, and as I understand, possibly even on the east side of the park. So I would just encourage the council to be aware of this issue and how many people are being affected by this issue and that it has some pretty severe implications as far as we're concerned with the integrity of our homes, because we do not know what's going on underground other than there's a constant flow of water right around all of our foundations. It's very disconcerting, especially when our sump pumps quit, which most of us have experienced at least once. Other than that, I will allow my neighbors to continue with what they would have to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Who was next? All right, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Robert Kama. My wife Patricia. We actually live across the street from Jonathan at 2817 Rose Ellen. And as Jonathan mentioned, we do have a proposal from Bill to do a stormwater study, basically for Cheryl Drive. And we do support that fund, that study, and hope that the council will approve funding for it. But as Jonathan mentioned, it is narrow. Our house is located on the lower end of Rose Ellen Avenue. It's one house to the south of Cheryl Drive. And basically, stormwater flows from the upper portion of Rose Ellen down to the north towards Cheryl Drive and McKee Farms Park. In the backyards, unfortunately, not all of this stormwater is able to make its way to Cheryl Drive. And what happens, at least in our backyard, we get the water pooling. And I know that's an issue for some of our adjoining neighbors and for Jonathan across the street. This creates a whole host of problems. We have in our backyard a high-voltage MG&E power box, and many times that power box is just sitting in water, which causes us great concern. We wanted to raise the visibility on the proposed study that it needs to be broader, not only dealing with the flooding issues on Cheryl Drive, which are important, but also the backyard flooding issues that we are encountering. And we would like the city to actually do both of those remediation projects together as opposed to separate. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? All right, Anna, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Anna Churchack, and I live on Cheryl Drive. Our backyard butts up next to Bob and Trish's and also some other neighbors that you might be hearing from tonight. And I just want to reiterate, we obviously have the same issues. We often have standing water in our backyard. Our sump pump is constantly running. And then there is also the issue of flooding with extreme rain events in the street in front of our house, where it's so bad that cars have stalled out. So you'll hear a lot of the same stories, and I just want to reiterate that this is definitely an issue, and it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Go ahead.
Thank you, council. Brian Jacobs, my wife Dana. Our history with the stormwater flooding is long and sordid, so I'll spare you the details. But we've been working with the city, different administrators, mayors, superintendents, for about six years. But we'll fast-forward to September 2020, when we met with many of the neighbors and representatives from the city, and we had talked about specific work tasks and schedules that were going to be completed during the fall and the winter season. We had followed up several times, mayors, alders. Finally got some information in January regarding the study. And it was our understanding that the study needed to be finished in May of 2021 to get into the operating budget. And then with follow-ups just recently this spring, we understand now that the study won't be completed until September. So one of our concerns is what implications does that mean? Because it feels like that maybe things are going to be delayed another year. So generally speaking, it feels like that if we're not following up, there doesn't seem to be a lot of feedback from the city, updates. And we just would like some more accountability, more follow-up and more follow-through, because I just, we just don't feel like it's our responsibility to try to follow up with scheduling items. And we would like more commitment to deadlines and work tasks and not have to follow up with the city. And I'll defer to Dana with any other thoughts that she may have.
Well, we live next door to Anna, and actually, our backyard neighbors are Trish and Bob. So, you know, you've heard from all of them, the similar issues that we have. You know, we have an issue with the fact that we continue to be assessed on our full property, even though a good portion of it is unusable for a good majority of the year anymore. It's getting worse. It's not getting better, and my husband is correct. We've been trying to deal with this. We're going on our seventh year, and it's getting a bit ridiculous, quite honestly. I look at all these new projects that are coming up in the city, and it's great that we're expanding our parks and want to build huge community centers and all these things. But these are stormwater problems. We have our street floods multiple times. It floods 10 to 15 feet into our yard and washes all the mulch out. We replace it every year. Our driveway looks like a disaster anymore, because it continues to sink from all of the groundwater issues that we have. And you're right, it is a groundwater and a stormwater issue. It is a, it is a mess. And what I would like from the city is a commitment to actually do this project, not to continue to push it, not to continue to change the deadlines, not to make me have to reach out week after week after week and then finally have to get the alders and the mayor and everybody else involved just to continue to be updated on this project. You've made a commitment. It's now been a year since we met, and we're no further along, really, than we were the last time. And so we would like to see the city commit to this project, commit to fixing it, and give us a schedule that someone's going to stick to and give us, you know, updates on it without us having to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. I'm Mike, and my wife Sheila Leian, we're on Cheryl Drive, 5647 Cheryl Drive. I guess here in full support of everything that's been said so far by all of our neighbors. We're actually downhill downstream from Jonathan and see a lot of that same water flow. We have the same above-ground and below-ground issues. Sump pump runs a lot. And then on water, we went through, we've been here about two and a half years. We did extensive regrading of the yard to try to get some of the water to flow out towards the street. Many thousands of dollars. That did a partial job. We still get a lot of water in the yard. And probably the bigger issue for us is the lot next to us is, there's no house on it, but it collects water. Any moderate to heavy rain, it'll, the water will stand there several inches deep for at least several weeks. And to us, I mean, it's not only, you know, a general hazard, but it's a public safety hazard in that, you know, mosquitoes are crazy out of there with that water standing there. And we're just also very frustrated with the pace of, and lack of response we've seen from the work that's been going on, even just in the short time we've been involved. So we definitely are in support of all the work that's being done. We would just like to see some real solutions come up and be put in place much sooner. I'm not sure if you have anything to add, Jill. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Who's next, Scott? Is there anyone else besides Tim? That's all? All right. Sorry, Tim. Move on. So that's all the non-appearances, or probably persons for non-agenda items. Joe, did you want to change the agenda quick? I'm on the agenda.
Yes, Mayor. I move that we move up Resolution R 7321 to the top of the agenda.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella. All in favor of amending the agenda, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay. All right, that is amended. So do you want to do a motion first, Joe, and then?
Sure. I move to adopt Resolution R 7321, Resolution condemning hate and violence against people of Asian descent.
Second.
I think I heard Randy first there. Do you want to speak to it? And then we got a couple of people from the public that want to speak to it. But if you'd like to speak to it first, Joe, since it's your resolution, you can.
Sure, absolutely. So, you know, I bring this resolution forward fully knowing, you know, it's, you know, not implementing any policy, it's performative. But I think it is really important that we bring this issue to light, given the murder of eight people in Atlanta, Georgia over the weekend, six of them Asian or Asian-American women. This is, you know, not a new thing historically. It's happened throughout our nation's history. It's happened here in Dane County. And, you know, I'm putting this resolution forward to show a sign of solidarity from the city of Pittsburgh to our, you know, residents of Asian descent. Again, I know this resolution alone won't solve, you know, the, you know, both policy and individual, you know, actions of, you know, both small and incredibly large and violent against people of Asian descent. But, you know, this is something I feel that's important that we need to put forward and make a statement about. So the referral sheet and the resolution are attached in the agenda packet along with some articles that give context. And, you know, I asked the council today to pass this resolution to make sure that we're showing our neighbors that we are here for them.
Thank you. I know we have at least one member of the public that wishes to speak. Who's that, Scott?
Oh, no, that's okay. Dr. Ratanatip Shonmyung. I lived in Pittsburgh for 15 years at 5713 Merlin Street. And my children attended school in Madison. My husband is a principal in Verona. And as I am a member of this community, I wanted to support Resolution R 7321. And I know that this is symbolic. I know that this is, you know, basically, as my own daughter asked, you know, what this is going to do? And I said, probably not much. But for us, it is a welcome gesture to be recognized that Pittsburgh welcomes and embraces our diverse community member, because Pittsburgh is a diverse community. And as a person of Asian descent, I am originally from Thailand. I would say that, you know, my experience had been, perhaps, I am fortunate that have not had physical, that violence happen against me or my children. However, I wanted to remind everybody that violence come in many forms, and it hurts us not only physically, but also mentally, and that our children are the most who suffer from them, the, you know, from the violences that happen verbally or physically in school. My children had been, you know, picked on, had been bullied in school because they don't have a normal mother, as they told me. My daughter once told me that she wished she could have a normal mom who doesn't have an accent, who people don't call Ching Chong or whatever else, you know, words that are used in American slang to call Asian. And also for the fact that, you know, I served at UW Madison as an employee for 23 years. And at numerous meetings that I was asked, you know, which refugee camp I grew up in. Do I speak English? I have my neighbor in Pittsburgh who only speaks to my husband, who's an American person, because they thought that I don't speak English, even though I personally have five degrees. So I just wanted to remind everybody that bullying and microaggression build up, you know, into violence, right? And people who have violence happen against them, then turn around, and then they want to gain that power back. And that's what happened when the act of violence happened upon others. Then they ended up to be a repeat, the offender themselves. And so this action would be very welcome, symbolically, but very welcome and would be very appreciated. So thank you.
Is there another person online that wants to speak to this? Okay, I do have a written comment from Andrew Potts, who lives here in Pittsburgh, registering in support of this matter as well. And that's the public appearances. Is there anyone that wants to speak to this at all, in the council? Yeah, Gabriella, go ahead.
I'm fully in support of the resolution, and I'm really happy that we're discussing this today. I think this is one of those issues that awareness actually does matter, because I don't think it's an issue that's as obvious to some people as it, and awareness matters. And obviously, action also matters, but at this point in time, more people need to know that it's an issue and need to hear the stories of people that are having issues and know that it's happening in their community. So I fully support this. I encourage you to read it. I think it's really well-written and really speaks to what's important about it. And there's a lot of great, a lot of great things to read about this issue, and I encourage you to seek out resources and educate yourself, even if it's just one article. But I'm really excited that we're taking the symbolic action today.
Anyone else? All right, seeing nothing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose, nay. All right, thank you, everyone. Now we'll go back to the agenda as published, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Thank you, Sarah. And then signed by Shannon. Anything that anyone wants to remove from consent agenda to do separately? Gabriella.
Yeah, I have several things. Sorry. The minutes are 6321, R 6421, R 6621, and R 6721.
Can you slow down, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So the minutes, 6321, 64.
64.
Okay.
66 and 67.
All right.
I should have just given you numbers.
Anything else? All right, then, all in favor of approving everything left, I think it's three, six, and seven. Say aye.
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 And oppose, nay. All right, you want to go these three, these one by one, the minutes first, Gabriella?
Yes, just a very small typo on the minutes on page three, under the Resolution R 5321. Votes against, none is misspelled. It's a quick correction. Everything else is fine from my perspective.
Would you like to make a motion to approve as amended?
I move to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Sent by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay. All right, that's approved. What about 6321?
I would like to refer this to RCC as well.
Are they meeting at a, like, pretty soon? I just, I don't remember.
They are, we are meeting April 12th, the day before the next.
Perfect.
Yep.
Okay. All right, any other changes anyone has? Would you like to make a motion to approve as amended?
Can you tell, Gabriella, which one is that, the one they're moving to?
6321, it's the contract for mowing medians.
Oh, okay.
So adding.
Do I move approve or do I move to?
Move approve as amended.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I move to approve as amended.
Take on.
Sent by Julia. All in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay. All right, that one's approved. All right, what about 6421?
I would like to refer that to RCC.
All right, do you want to do a motion to do that?
I move to approve as amended.
Second.
Sent by Dorothy. All in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay. All right, 6621.
I would like to refer that to Tree Advisory. I believe we have a meeting on April 8th before the council meeting.
I'll second that also.
All right, so all in favor of approving by adding Tree Advisory, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay. All right, that's approved. And 6721.
I'd like to refer to RCC.
All right, you want to make a motion to?
Sorry, I move to approve as amended.
I'll second that also.
Sent by Dorothy. All in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay.
Aye.
Thank you.
That's also added. All right, now, administrator's report, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder. Ready? Okay, thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, the April spring election is on April 6th. In-person absentee voting started today and runs through April 2nd. A voting absentee ballot in person will be offered curbside or by appointment only. So you can go to the Clerk's website for that information and the link there. Crews have mobilized for the second phase of the Fish Hatchery Road reconstruction from Trace Way to just out the McKee Road intersection. There will be ongoing work throughout the spring, summer, and fall. They'll be switching the traffic to construct the northbound lanes, and traffic will be flowing on the southbound lanes to start. Reminder from the fire department that wildfire season is upon us, so they just encouraged everybody to use extreme caution if you're thinking about having a bonfire, because it is wildfire season. The postal contract station, we met with postal officials last week. The contract station will definitely be staying open throughout at least April 15th, and we're working on possibly a new operator to take over the contract of that existing contract station. So stay tuned. I'll keep giving you updates as we get closer to April 15th, and there's more information. The Sunnyside Dog Park, they're working on, note here from the Parks Department, the city of Pittsburgh Parks Department is working on a plan to reopen Sunnyside Dog Park in April, subject to weather conditions and turf conditions. They've made significant investments into turf and erosion control in the past few years, and they want to open the park for use whenever it is feasible, and public use is not damaging the park for the long-term future. is not damaging the park for the long-term future. Uh we're fortunate to have a heavily utilized park that our residents love to visit, but that heavy use combined with the spring thaw, rain, and the lack of developed grassroots structure threaten the turf in the park in late winter and early spring. We're aiming to have the park opened on April fifteenth, subject to weather and grass conditions, and hope that this minor inconvenience seasonally in the short term will yield a beautiful, sustainable park for Pittsburgh residents and their companions for the future. And then I just wanted to mention that uh we're looking at a soft reopening of City Hall uh the week of April nineteenth. Uh the doors would be open and unlocked here at City Hall with normal business hours of seven-thirty to four-thirty. Uh masks would still be required regardless of vaccination status. Uh there would be coverage for each department and that would be determined by the department head. A lot of employees would still be working remote, so if you're in the public and are looking to reach a specific staff person, it probably still would be best to call in advance uh to make sure that that person uh is available. We would have customer service here at the counter on the second floor, but uh we wouldn't offer that on the third floor yet, just because until um there's kind of the mass population uh availability for vaccination starting May first, we've still got many of our staff people that aren't eligible yet for the tiers and the the vaccinations. Uh so uh we'll keep you posted on that as we have more details uh coming forward. That's subject to change, obviously, based on public health orders from Madison and Dane County. If that all goes well, we're looking to have kind of a full reopening. Our target date is on Tuesday, June first. Again, subject to public health orders and kind of the progress on the vaccination there. But again, soft opening at least uh the week of April nineteenth, and we'll update at the next council meeting as we have more details uh as well. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention some good news. Uh the governor issued a press release uh yesterday that Pittsburgh was awarded another million-dollar T grant for the Lacy Road reconstruction um and improvements, and this was based on the job creation uh from two existing Pittsburgh businesses, Promega and Sub-Zero. Uh that program is based on uh five thousand dollars per job, up to two hundred jobs, and we've matched that requirement, and uh this will help to underwrite some of the costs of the Lacy Road reconstruction uh to help facilitate those companies' expansions and the traffic flow over there. So uh this is the fourth T grant that uh we've received, million-dollar T grant uh within the last ten years, which I think is unprecedented uh for a a community to get that many T grants. So that's a real credit to our major employers who are generating the expansions and the job creation, also our Public Works, Planning, Finance, and Economic Development Departments that have worked on and administration that have worked on how these grant applications in partnership with MSA. Uh so again, uh some great infrastructure being expanded here in Pittsburgh and over the last ten years, four million dollars to help to underwrite the cost of uh those infrastructure projects here in Pittsburgh. So thanks to the state and the governor and and WISDA.
All right, any questions at all? All right, and we'll move along to Plan Commission, Tom.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh the first one is certify survey map, it's CS twenty-three seventy-five twenty-one, request by Amy Knightscheck, an agent for Certco Incorporated for approval of a certified survey map to combine property. There's two properties located at fifty-three oh five and fifty-three twenty-one Verona Road into one lot. And I'll move a, I'll move approval, but it's still, we'll talk about.
Move to postpone.
I see.
Move to postpone. Hold on, Julia, it's moved to postpone, actually.
Postponing that?
Yeah, we're postponing this one, yeah.
I was gonna mention that uh what it, what happened here is um I must move to postpone until the fir- until another date. I don't know if there was a date set on that one.
Uh it's at least a month because we gotta wait for another Plan Commission meeting.
Okay.
All right, so move to postpone, is there a second?
Second.
Signed by Randy. All right, Julia, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay, all right. Any other uh questions or anything? This will be coming back in about a month. All in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay. All right, that is postponed, next one.
Second one is Resolution R seventy-two dash twenty-one, CS twenty-three seventy-six dash twenty-one. This is a resolution approving certified survey map request. CS twenty-three seventy-six twenty-one by Dan Modle. It's an agent for Promega Corporation to combine properties. This is two addresses, fifty-five ten and fifty-five hundred Noble Drive into one, and it's lot twenty-one, the Pittsburgh Technology Campus. Uh move approval, but.
Yep, is there a second?
I can second.
Signed by Dorothy.
Further comment on this is what's in, what's in place here is there's two properties and they wish to use one existing building and combine them together. And the obviously Plan Commission passed this, and um this had, there were three conditions, but uh that's the extent of it. They're, they have an existing property and they're putting the two into one.
Yep, and they're actually expanding a little bit on each side of the building as well, so they're, for whatever reason, the building's on two different lots, they're making it one lot, and they're also planning to expand on each side of the building as well. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, oh, Dorothy.
I was gonna say they they were also were going to do extensive remodeling inside in addition to adding those extensions?
Uh I don't think so, I think it's just on the ends. I don't think there's extensive remodeling.
Okay.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay. All right, that's approved, next one.
Next one's Resolution R seventy dash twenty-one, CS twenty-three seventy-seven dash twenty-one. It's a resolution approving the certified survey map request. CS twenty-three seventy-seven dash twenty-one by Brent Kimball, and he's an agent for Pittsburgh Manus LLC to divide property associated with twenty-three twenty-eight Verona Road into two lots, um which I'll explain, I'll move approval.
And I'll second again.
All right, signed by Dorothy, yeah, all right, Tom, go ahead and explain it.
And what this one is, is there's two lots at this location that I read, and they're going to be divided into two different areas. One lot will be for the storage units, and the other one at this address, fifty-three twenty-eight Verona Road, is gonna be for the uh the car wash. Obviously, there's been communication and they came up with an agreement there. And um so it's, the two lots were divided and it came with four condition as well.
And Plan Commission approved it as well. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, that's approved, next one.
I do believe, I want to make a little note, four and five um will be tabled.
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely, but um I have a little bit of notes on on them, but just so you're aware of it before I start here. Uh the first one is number four, it's uh the final plot request, twenty-three seventy-four twenty-one, request by Matt Mathew, agent for Pittsburgh Land LLC to approval of the final plot for subdivision of lot forty through forty-four and outlot sixteen and seventeen in Terravesta. And.
Well, first you gotta do the motion.
I'm moved to table this.
Table indefinitely.
Just table.
I'll second.
I heard Randy first. Um yeah, this one, the next one, the project isn't, you want to speak to it or do you want me to speak to it?
Well, the only I want to mention is, you can add on to this, Mayor, obviously you were there, but um the applicant wishes to withdraw his application and just redo it, they want to relook at it. So the situation is, is um they want to have a different design.
Yeah, the project is still happening, they just need to go about it a little bit different way with the CSM and ordinances and everything like that, so. Yep, so we're tabling definitely, and then they'll bring something else different back to us hopefully soon. All right, any other questions? All in favor of tabling indefinitely, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay. All right, that's tabled, next one, Tom.
And number five is ordinance is twenty-twenty-one dash zero dash oh-two, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-three of the Smart Code District to amend chapter five-six-two uh relative to building recessed or outdoor living space. Um and this was brought back from the council from February the twenty-third of this year, and the Plan Commission, I wish to pa- uh move approval.
Nope, table indefinitely. This one's also tableed indefinitely.
This was withdrawn too, I'm sorry.
Yep, same project as the last one.
I'm sorry, that's my fault. Um withdrawn, right, it was withdrawn, so.
Can you move to table indefinitely?
Okay, table, yep.
All right, signed by Randy. All in favor of tabling indefinitely, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay. All right, that's tabled, all right, next one, Tom.
The last one for the Plan Commission is ordinance, it's twenty-twenty-one dash zero dash oh-five, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-two. It's a zoning ordinance to amend chapter two-two-five-six-four of the park and recreation zoning district relative to dimensional standards for conditional use. And from the Plan Commission, I'll move approval.
Second.
Signed by Sarah, and I know Plan Commission approved, did Parks Commission approve?
Yes.
All right, Tom, do you want to speak to this?
What this is, is chapter twenty-two, these are um, I'll just cut to the chase. These are setbacks to be used and to re- and to be reviewed by may it be the Parks Commission and also brought back to the Plan Commission at time designated when it's um ready to come back to Plan Commission.
And this came forward from, as we're starting to design Hub Phase One, you know, they like to have the shelter and some things closer to the street and closer than water ordinances would currently allow, so uh just trying to, you know, make that project and maybe future projects like that as great as possible. And so one of the ways is to kind of waive this ordinance so that the shelter can be a little closer to the street for that project. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay. All right, that one's approved. And anything else for Plan, Tom?
Actually, the only other thing from Plan Commission is that um uh be aware that we did have one planner that moved to Verona, and the other alder uh will be departing, uh but the meeting we had this past Plan Commission uh overall was a good meeting.
All right, thank you. Uh Public Works, Sarah.
I'd like to move approval of Resolution R four-eight-two-one, a resolution releasing a public utility easement on outlot sixteen in Terravessa.
I'll second.
Signed by Randy, but.
It was tabled too.
No, are you sure you don't want to table this indefinitely?
So this one I'm confused on, I'm sorry, so this one we approved within works on two-fifteen, but I know Plan had tabled, so I I'm unsure that we had approved in works.
It should be tabled indefinitely.
Yeah, it needs to, this is with the same project that we tabled the other ones.
Okay.
So if you could withdraw that and table indefinitely, that'd be great.
Yes, I apologize, could I move to table indefinitely, a Resolution R four-eight-two-one?
All right, is there a second? Signed by Randy again, all right, yep, and this is the same project as before. Um all right, any questions at all? All in favor of tabling indefinitely, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay. All right, that is tabled, all right, next one.
Move approval of Resolution R fifty-nine twenty-one, the purchase of a twenty-twenty-one Ford F-one-fifty.
Is that a second?
That is not a member of the council, that's out of order. Uh since Joe said second, I'll give him a second on that. All right, did uh fin- did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Yes.
See that, it's okay, yes. All right, what's this one, Sarah?
This is uh replacing a Silverado two-thousand pickup truck. It was part of the CIP.
All right, any questions? All right, yeah, Gabriella.
I just want to make one comment that we talked about in Finance, but we, I don't know if we have the answer right now, but I did want to look into the fact that this is purchased through the state contract, which gives us good, better prices on vehicles. My, one of my questions was, is the lack of a hybrid electric option for this particular one, is it just the fact that there is no truck that's that's operationally sound? Or is that there's no truck that's available through the state contract? That's a question that I have, and I'm gonna look into it, and I can work back on the council when I find out a little bit more about that. It's more out of curiosity, I I respect the decision of the department to to choose a gas-powered vehicle if that works better, but I, my, my, my curiosity has been piqued and I'll I'll look into that.
All right, anyone else? All right, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay. All right, that's approved, anything else from Public Works?
No, thank you.
How about Parks?
Uh yes, for Parks, just first want to thank Austin Koss, the Community Center and Recreation Coordinator, for his work within the Parks Department. He is pursuing another opportunity, so his last day will be March thirtieth, but he will definitely be missed. And then uh thank you, Mike, for giving the update on Sunnyside Park that have been given, there's been some interest in that. Um and then lastly, just our next meeting is Thursday, April first.
All right, thank you. Library Board, Randy.
Uh thank you, Mayor, yes. Uh the Library Board met last Wednesday, uh March seventeenth, a number of items were discussed. The financial overview and the register uh from the Treasury Report, and uh Janu- January's numbers are out, and of course, we're on target. Uh the board also uh extended the uh the term for Steve Arnold, he is the chair, and with with COVID, they felt it was necessary just to extend it out one, one year. And uh there were a number of policy reviews, the electronic services, uh the grouping was a meeting room policy, three-D printer policy, computer internet use policy, social media policy, and wireless access policy. Uh all of the uh these policy reviews were were analyzed and updated and discussed and and approved. We also looked at the access services, circulation policy, uh privacy of library records and library use policy, theft of library materials, community bulletin board, laptop checkout policy, and uh they were approved as well. Um and I think overall, that uh that concludes uh the Library Board meeting.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Agent Well, Dorothy.
Thank you, we had a busy meeting on March eleventh, um main items where we went over the uh twenty-twenty annual report, very interesting, that's available for people to find online. Um we also had a presentation by Mandy on the Equity and Inclusion Program. Mission of the group is to promote equity and social justice and to create change through education and awareness, strives to ensure our clients, customers, and employees feel they belong and are welcomed, respected, and heard, so that this is an employee group, at least for now. Gabriella is extremely familiar with it and would love to have a moment to say something about it, I'm sure. Um mentions three main focus areas, education and training, recruitment and hiring, and onboarding and retention. Then we had a report from the Senior Center Friends, they highlighted um that twenty-five-plus people attended the Friends Travel Show Zoom Meeting in February, so they're looking forward to some interesting travel options. Um they're gonna have pancake breakfast on Sunday, April twenty-fifth, and ten percent of any food purchases made throughout the day at the Hy-Vee Marketplace Grill will go back to the Friends. And you should mention Senior Center when you pay your bill for that. Um they're working on a reopening plan uh for the center uh starting in April, but more in May, we'll bring back some small group programs. There will be some meal participants in April. Um they've got some tax help available if people want to get ahold of Senior Center and ask about that, they'd be welcome to do so. Um student, Edgewood Student Nurses are still working with. Student, Edgewood Student Nurses are still working with a lot of the adults. UW School of Public Health and Medicine students are working on a program called Be Healthy, Be Happy. There's a plastic bag recycling event in April, residents are encouraged to drop bags off at the Senior Center, these are just the regular plastic grocery bags. And that will be in partnership with fundraising opportunity through Hy-Vee, for every reusable grocery bag purchased during the month of April, a dollar will go back to the Senior Center Friends. So thank you to Hy-Vee for that, and our next meeting will be April eighth.
All right, thank you. Going on to RCC, Gabrielle?
No report.
All right, what about TTC?
Transportation Transit, we met on March eleventh, and we started with a discussing, discussion about the bus service, Madison Metro. We had a short presentation about the network design study that Madison Metro is embarking upon, the phase one is done, and there's a report that kind of lays out the choices that are in front of us in terms of what, you know, both Madison Metro and also the partners as to what we want to prioritize, because there's like different considerations, things like how much access, how much frequency versus how much coverage, which are competing goals, and they've laid out all the different choices that are in front of us, and then the next phase is to actually look at, into making those choices. So there's a really great presentation online on Madison Metro's website, we can learn a little bit more about that, there's also a report that you can read if you prefer to, to read it, and I can send that around to the council as well. And then we also, we encourage people to join us for that particular Transportation and Transit meeting, to share about their experiences, we unfortunately didn't have anyone join us, but I think that's just a challenge with public, public meetings, getting people to show up, so I'll do better to try to get the word out there in the future. But I will say that if you're interested in speaking about the public transportation system, we do have a survey that's available online, and is it okay if I share my screen for just a moment to show people what it looks like?
Sure.
So if you Google Pittsburgh Transportation, I'm sorry, Pittsburgh Transit Survey, this will pop up, it's a pretty quick survey, just gives you some options. One of the interesting things about this is that there's a question about if you have a location-specific comment, if there's a particular bus stop, that's a real issue. If you say yes, you can actually mark on the map where that issue is and report it, and that's something that the, the staff can use to resolve those issues. So I'd encourage you to, if you use the system in the past, if you currently use it, go ahead and hop on there and, and talk about what's important to you, the more information we get, the better we're prepared to, to make these choices that are forthcoming. And then also say I've sat in on a couple of metro transit meetings with different municipal partners that they have, and they're working on being a, a good partner in terms of being more clear about what the costs look like. One of the things I wanted to report on just quickly is that there was more federal funding with the Passage to the Recovery Act, and I think the total influx of money from federal funding is sixty-nine million, which will keep the system costs steady for us for the coming years. So although the cost may increase, that federal funding will fill in the gap, and then Metro is looking at some significant solutions to find kind of long-term, long-term solutions to the funding, the funding, I won't, I don't want to say crisis, but the funding issues that are coming down the line. And that is all I have.
All right, thank you, Tom, you have a question?
Gabrielle, I just got a question, a comment for you, you can take it or leave it, but I'm trying to help you with it. I happen to watch the TTC meeting, and I want to tell you that, just a word of advice, you really have to play hardball with Madison, because they will run you over. I was really disappointed in that presentation, it was great for Madison, it was a great presentation, but really got disturbed when they said they were going to stop at the bus location on Park Street, or was going to go that far, and then it stops. You know, I know, I don't, I don't want to get into the finance part of it, but all I'm saying is, with the Bus Rapid Transit, that was supposed to come to Pittsburgh by the former mayor, and now it doesn't come to Pittsburgh, they're not even talking about Pittsburgh, and I didn't hear them talk about it at all. Now, maybe you were at meetings when they did, which is okay, but the meeting that I listened to, they never brought up, they hardly talked about Pittsburgh, they, they stopped at the bus barn on Park Street, and I think it was because of the college. And just be aware that they're a moving target, and they can be with their, especially, you, the mayor already knows, when it comes to what they want to charge Pittsburgh for the bus routes, but I was, I don't know, maybe, I, I don't want to get into discussion with you, but I can talk to you later, but just be aware that you may have to play hardball with them, not softball, because, you know, go ahead, that's all I want to tell you.
Yeah, I, I certainly welcome that conversation, Tom, let's, let's certainly have a, have a chat about the history that you have. I will say, you did remind me that I do hope that we can have a presentation at an upcoming TTC meeting, and possibly a committee of the whole to present to the council about what Metro is working on. But I, I, you know, certainly am listening to, to your feedback, and I'm happy to have a conversation with you. I will say that with Bus Rapid Transit, one of the things I learned at the TTC meeting that I neglected to mention, is that Fish Hatchery is not off the table for Bus Rapid Transit, like they have the two lines planned already, but there are other, there are plans in the future to do more Bus Rapid Transit, and we are certainly on the table if we want to be a part of it. And I will say, also want to be, be clear that in terms, in the near term, the two Bus Rapid Transit, which are going to be in the city of Madison exclusively, that, that cost is not being passed on to partners, so we're not paying for that as a partner, because, because we're not getting that service. But if Bus Rapid Transit is something that Pittsburgh wants to see, that would be interesting to hear, because that's definitely something that could be part of the conversation. But certainly, Tom, give me a call, and we can chat more about it.
Randy, you have a comment?
Yes, just to support both sides here of the conversation, as it's been mentioned, I do sit on the Madison Transportation Policy and Planning Board, and they are looking at revamping the entire bus system. And Fish Hatchery is still in the redesign, that could change, but there's more conversation, more discussion to take place. So, that should, there's going to be some serious discussion within the next year, and where that, the, the actual bus routes, the entire transportation system, what direction that will take, so.
All right, thank you. Dorothy?
I was just going to say, BRT coming down into Pittsburgh is definitely still on the table to come down to Catas Bend, but what I want is for it to come down to City Campus. So we, we need to really advocate to make it all the way down to Lacy Road.
All right, I think we can move on to Seda next, go ahead, Julia Seda.
We are meeting March twenty-five, twenty-fifth.
All right, Ag and Rural Affairs, Randy? Oh, hold on a second, yeah, Tom, question? Turn your mic on, turn your mic on.
The rest of these, no, I don't have anymore. Julia, are you aware that this has been brought to my attention by numerous people? I know you're aware of it, but is there any plan for the, boy, it'd be great to have a Lowe's there, but any plans, have you heard anything going on at all with the movie theater on County Truck Highway PD, you know, there? It's just a vacant building, it's vacant, and do we know of anything going on there?
I think.
Can you repeat?
Mike Zimmerman can answer that question. The question is about, if there's any, we heard anything about the movie theater reopening, but Mike, Mike can speak to that.
Mike is one who know.
Yeah, there is interest from another operator, and hopefully there will be some kind of communication and announcement within the next couple of weeks, so stay tuned.
All right, going on to Ag and Rural Affairs, Randy?
Uh, yes, Ag and Rural Affairs met last week, March sixteenth. Items discussed was the agricultural accessory-related uses in city agricultural zoning districts. What that boils down, boils down to is, the discussion was on rural event venues, and a lot of that, of that discussion has been taking pla- has taken place in the last several months, we're finally getting down to fine-tuning what that will actually be, and that should come before council very soon. And then there was discussion regarding the Purchase of Development Rights Program. There's some thought out there that there are farms in the rural area that would like to stay farms and never be developed, and the issue is though, of how that's going to be financed, and so it was tabled, just because of the financing. That's all, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. EMS, Shannon?
Uh, nothing to report.
All right, what about Bike Committee, Joe?
Um, our next meeting is April sixth, and of course, we have a committee of the whole presentation tomorrow at seven, so tune in.
All right, Tree Advisory, Gabrielle?
I'm going to be like a broken record this year, but we're working on the tree protection ordinance, but we had a good conversation on the last meeting about setting up our goals and some definitions, and Anna Healy, our, our forester, and also Sonia Crisell, our city planner, did some research in terms of what, it already exists in our city planning documents in regards to, to tree policy, so we took a look at those as a starting place, and we're going to move forward from there. The next step that we're going to present at the next Parks meeting, because Tree Advisory is kind of a subset of the Parks Commission, even though we're a separate board, so we're going to present what we worked on, get some feedback from them, and then continue working on it, and hopefully bring it to the council sometime later this year.
All right, Landmarks Preservation, Shannon?
Nothing to report.
All right, what about Housing Advisory, Dorothy?
We met three eight before the last council meeting, so the report from that still stands, we have no future meetings scheduled.
All right, what about Healthy Neighborhoods?
And Healthy Neighborhoods, met on three-ten, we went over all the thirteen applications that we'd received, of those, we are recommending full or part funding for seven of them, for Bad Jopari Needs Network, for Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Dane County, for Boys and Girls Club of Dane County, for Dear Diary, Latino Academy of Workforce Development, Little Johns, and One Thousand Friends of Wisconsin. We will be seeing an approval for that at our next council meeting, and there will be full details on each one of the applications at that time.
All right, thank you. There are ad hocs, our Park Planning Committee, Randy, have you guys met yet or not, you got any report?
No, we have not met.
Okay.
Nothing to report, thank you.
All right, great, all right, Finance, Julia?
Yes, in our Finance Committee meeting, we review all the detail of all check issued, check number one-two-one-eight-seven-one-dash-one-two-one-nine-five-nine, dated March first to March fifteenth, one, total in six hundred four thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars with eighty-four cents.
All right.
That's it.
All right.
We have a very short meeting.
All right, Personnel, Dorothy?
Uh, we have not met recently, we do have a scheduled meeting April first, and presumably that will focus on administrator applications.
All right, Public Safety, Sarah?
Nothing to report.
All right, Mayor's Report, a few things. One, I got a letter from the Arbor Day Foundation that once again, in twenty twenty, Pittsburgh was, earned recognition as a Tree City USA, and I know we've gotten this for a number of years, but I wanted to share that. Tomorrow afternoon, we're doing phone interviews for the new city administrator, and I know Gabrielle is on those with me and a couple of people from the community, so we will be announcing finalists later this week after those. Let's see here, I am also going to be working this week and Monday and Tuesday next week to try and fill our various committee openings, we've got a lot of people who have applied, but, you know, it's kind of a, get in your applications as soon as possible, because I'm going to be starting to fill those, so that we can have those approved after the election. And that is the stuff I have. I believe we are on District, starting with District Two, so Julia, do you want to do all the report?
Hello?
There you go.
So you're going to start it with District Two?
What?
Can you repeat? I cannot hear you.
You're doing a, all the report, District Two, all the report.
Okay, so no, I want to thank all the neighbors that came today to speak out, in District Two, we have two neighborhoods that they are having different issue, one is in the Seminole Village, Gabrielle and I, we have been working with this neighbor since, I don't know, September last year, and then with the, I want to thank you also, the, the neighbor for the South of McKee, that they came to speak, and these neighbors have been suffering for this issue for many years, and, and it's time that, you know, we take control, and we are accountable for our actions, especially we promised them stuff, and then we're going to accomplish those. I think you will see that it's going to be in a study coming soon, to fund, and a study for the flooding issue in the South McKee area, so, and I would like your support. And then I think we need to, you know, to be accountable, and do what we promised to these neighbors, so that's it.
All right, Gabrielle?
Also, just wanted to thank the neighbors for coming out to speak, I always think that there's a lot of value in hearing things publicly, I think stormwater issues are something that's going, going to only get worse, but some of these neighbors have been dealing with these issues for a very, very long time, and I, I'm looking forward to having more conversations about this. The RCC is going to do a special stormwater-focused meeting in June of this year, so I think that'll be a good opportunity to kind of air some of these, these issues out publicly, but I, I know it takes time to prepare for those, so thanks to those neighbors that came out today. And then I also wanted to just reiterate that the, there is early voting available, I guess it's in-person absentee voting, available at the city clerk's office, so if you're interested in that option that is available to you, go to the city website and check that out, and if you don't know what's on your ballot, which you might not, you do have at least one election on your ballot, because there is statewide, countywide, citywide elections, if you go to myvote.wi.gov, there's a tool that shows you, you can fill in your address and find out exactly what's on your ballot, and get ready for that. And then also, I guess, the last item about vaccines, there's been a lot of updates in terms of people that qualify for COVID-nineteen vaccines, there are a lot of new people qualified as of Monday, so if you haven't checked in a while, I'd check out the Wisconsin Department of Health and see if you qualify, and find out a little bit more about whether or not you want to get a vaccine, because there's a lot of different ways to go about it, through your employer, through your healthcare provider, through, you know, Walgreens Pharmacy, our local Pittsburgh family pharmacy is giving out drive-through vaccinations and doing a really wonderful job with it, so definitely, might be a good time to, to check it out again if you haven't thought about it in a little while, thanks.
All right, going to District Three, Sarah?
Thank you, I just have something quick, just to say that this is my last council meeting, and I just want to take a moment to thank the residents that I've represented for the past two years, for their feedback and support. It's been an honor to serve as the District Three representative, and I also just want to thank the mayor and recognize how he goes above and beyond to respond to questions, and same for city staff, they've been great partners and have shown great patience, and I'm just extremely grateful, and it's been a pleasure, thank you.
You know that you're going to be gone in two weeks, is that why?
Yep.
Oh, all right, yeah, everyone else, you still got another meeting, Tom?
Correct, yeah, I, oh, well, in two weeks, that's the election day, correct?
No, oh, sorry, in three weeks, we do have one more meeting as this council, so there's election, and then the week after that is this council's last meeting, and then.
Well, thank you for, thank you, and sorry, I didn't know that well, but thank you still goes out, apologies.
That's okay, all right, Shannon?
Nothing to really report, but I do want to say thank you, Sarah, you will be missed, and I wish you would have ran a second time, but, you know, I'm happy that you're, you're doing other things, and you were great to work with, and I'm sure our, the folks that we represent really appreciate everything you've done, thank you.
All right, thank you. Tom?
I just want to call to your attention again, District Four people, District Four, those of you who live along Sign Road and adjacent streets, please keep in tune to the road projects that's going in your front yard, that's. Um, that's coming up, it probably won't be looked at until roughly May. But just be aware, there's a large project that the city's about to do on Sign Road, and it also butts up to, obviously, if there's a question, District 3. Um, but, you know, it's right there, Sign Road is, um, that's gonna be a big project, so be aware of it. If you have any questions, I've said it before, I won't say it again. Please contact City Hall, contact someone, and if you have a question, hopefully they'll answer it for you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Randy.
Uh, just one thing, I'd like to circle back and, uh, give a big shout out regarding the T1 grant. I, I'm not sure if people are aware of how important this is for the construction of, reconstruction of Lacy Road. Uh, there's, uh, Mike Zimmerman mentioned a number of names earlier, but I would, again, would like to recognize those that put in their, their time and effort into making that grant successful. Uh, the Public Works, Finance, Economic Development, Mayor Richardson, your time, and, um, of course, the, uh, the, the employers, uh, the major employers in that area. Thank you, thank you for the, the hard work and it, the success, it paid off. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Dorothy.
Yeah, kind of seconding Randy, one thing that I'd like to repeat often is that one of the new employees that we really need in the city is a grant writer that would be available to all departments. Um, we need people that are able to chase money for us. Um, I've got a couple of things, one, um, they're both kind of general interest more so. Um, but note that the, uh, economic stimulus payments have gone out. Um, there will be a second set going out March 24th if people haven't gotten theirs yet. If you haven't gotten it, you'll be able to file on your federal income tax forms, even if, if you don't need to file, otherwise you want to file just for that. Uh, and if you were claimed as a dependent in 2019 and are no longer dependent, you may qualify to receive that yourself. Um, and then the due date for filing 2020 tax returns has been extended to May 17th. So that will impact, um, give people a little bit of breathing room. Uh, and then I got a note from MG&E saying that they will not be disconnecting residential customers, that they are legally able to disconnect. Um, they're just good people that way. But they are recommending that people who are not paid up get on a personalized payment plan to avoid late charges and disconnection eventually. Be a huge hassle. Uh, mgne.com or mge.com has a customer service tab with a lot of information. Um, they're also recommending people talk to Energy Services if, um, they need help getting those payments made. And they, that web address is esiw.com. So it's Energy Services, Inc. So hopefully we can not have a lot of our residents losing electricity, uh, within the next month or so. That's, every year it happens, and we try to avoid it, but, so those are suggestions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Joe.
Sure, a couple of things. Um, one, if you have a 7th to 12th grader, um, particularly an MMSD, there is a free virtual hip-hop architecture, um, camp. Uh, the focus is on designing neighborhoods and designing and built space. It's free, um, it's March 29th through April 2nd, um, 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Um, there are prizes that will be given away, including, uh, custom Nike shoes, Beats by Dre, and gift cards. Um, we have a, an architect here in our community, Michael Ford, uh, who's leading that project. So, um, feel free to look it up and sign up. Um, at the Allied Wellness Center, um, in partnership with Benevolent Specialist Projects, Newbridge and the Boys and Girls Club will be hosting a COVID-19 vaccine clinic tomorrow, Wednesday, March 24th, at the Allied Boys and Girls Club on 1469 Genuin Road. Um, you must be 65 or older to receive a vaccine. Um, and then finally, I mentioned in the last meeting, there, um, Dane County is releasing a, um, Equity Roadmap, um, on violence prevention. Um, they're actually gonna be, um, leading a informational session on that, um, a webinar, and it will take place Tuesday, March 30th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. Um, so if you'd like to learn on, uh, about the county's plans for, um, violence prevention, um, please look that up and tune in. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Uh, there is no unfinished business, new business. Julia, did you have something you want to say? For new business?
Can you repeat again?
Did you have something, uh, do you want to say before we got into new business?
Uh, yes, I, I wanna recuse myself to go to the closed session.
All right, uh, first up then is actually a claim from Kevin Cassidy. I don't know, I don't believe Kevin is here to speak to this though, all right? And then we have actually a claim for Jonathan Genke. He is not here as well to speak to this. And then actually a claim from Patrick Marsh, and Patrick is here. If you would like to go ahead and speak to your claim.
I would, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'd like to provide you with some background in the timeline that resulted in a many of my personal items from my office to go missing. On November 30th, I received a call from the mayor and human resource manager, Sarah Olson, telling me that I was being placed on administrative leave for a reason not to be discussed at this meeting. During the week of November 30th, late in the week, I contacted the mayor and Sarah to request access to City Hall and my office to pick up some medical information for my father that I kept in a folder on my desk. I was granted access and was instructed that Mike Zimmerman would meet me that Sunday, December 6th, at City Hall to let me in. I was allowed to access that Sunday and took care of getting the appropriate VA paperwork that was necessary for the transfer of my father to the VA hospital in Toma. The following Friday, December 11th, my father passed away unexpectedly. I now needed to get some additional paperwork in order to begin the process of taking care of his arrangements and working on his estate. Again, the mayor and Sarah allowed me or gave me permission to access the building while being accompanied by Mike Zimmerman. I met that Sunday, December 13th, at City Hall and took the appropriate paperwork from my office. On January 8th, I submitted the appropriate signed paperwork, formally resigning from my position as city administrator with the city. The following Tuesday, January 12th, the council accepted and approved my voluntary, I repeat voluntary resignation and separation agreement. Later that week, I contacted Sarah once again, Sarah Olson, um, to access my office to pick up my personal items. Sarah informed me that others at City Hall wouldn't give me any names and made the decision that I needed to wait for the 10-day waiting period that was in the separation agreement prior to getting access to City Hall to pick up my personal items. I agreed to wait and take care of this after that waiting period was over. At that time, Sarah and I agreed to coordinate a day, time, for me to come in, again, repeat, for me to come in and pick up my items. We coordinated that this would be done outside normal work hours. We both agreed that I would be able to take care of picking up my items the week of January 24th. When I contacted Sarah after that 10-day waiting period, the week of the 24th of January, I was informed that I could not go into my office to pick up my stuff. Again, after we had made arrangements for me to pick up my items at City Hall, hadn't agreed upon time to do this, I was told that I could not pick up my stuff. She instead stated that my stuff would be packed up and delivered to an office in downtown Madison. Tell me where that makes sense. I live less than two miles from City Hall, and they're taking my personal items downtown Madison. I told Sarah and the mayor at that time that I didn't want any more touching, anyone touching my personal items, and I would take care of it as previously agreed to. The mayor, Sarah, and others associated with the city stated that this would be done, no net, no matter what my requests were, along with no justification for me not being able to access my office after being able to access my office on two prior occasions. I informed them once again that I did not want anyone touching my personal items, many of which had and have significant and personal meaning to me. The city again denied my request, and it stated that the items would be moved to those offices downtown. I told them that this was unacceptable and reiterated that the touching of my items would result in, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I reiterated that I didn't want anyone touching my items alone, packing them up without myself being present. Excuse me. Sometime within the next few weeks, my items were packed and moved to Mr. Wescott's office in downtown Madison. Again, this is over three times the distance, um, from my apartment in Fitchburg. These items were moved up to Mr. Wescott's office and stored for a significant amount of time. I told city officials that I did not agree with this and would not be driving downtown and moving my items back to the apartment. Sometime within the next week, my items were again moved from Mr. Wescott's office back to my apartment. That's a real productive use of city resources right there, very productive. Over the next few days, I carefully went through my items and noticed that several items were missing. I informed the city of my missing items and was told that all my personal items had been packed up and moved. I sent a list of these missing items to the mayor, Sarah, and Mike Wescott, by some additional individuals at City Hall. All of them stated that they had no knowledge of where these items were. Two of these items were still in the office, even though they had no idea where these items were. Two were still in the office, and the city claims that they were not mine. However, those items were given to me by economic development staff, Mr. Zimmerman's right there to acknowledge that, much like several other personal items that I have in my possessions from over the years. The city refused to do, to return those to me, and I still haven't seen those. About a week later, again, I received an additional file from the city now found in my office. So you can see what a thorough job they did when they went through my office. They're leaving personal items of mine, and now they find a file, a personal file, that was left in my office, and they mailed it to me. I filed a report with the Fitchburg Police Department in regards to the theft of my items. That investigation is currently being handled by the Dane County Sheriff's Office. I believe he will be interviewing over 100 of city staff. Again, a great use of city resources. Congratulations. Expect to be reimbursed for these items in full, as described in my claim. Denial of the claim will result in taking this case to the courts. I don't believe the city wants to look any more foolish than they already do. Why would you allow an individual access to City Hall twice to pick up their items, but not a third time to pick up their, their personal items that are in their office? There has never been occasion during my five years with the city of Fitchburg or my 18-plus years in city management where an employee left, an employee left on a voluntary basis and was not allowed to retrieve their personal items. I would ask you, is the planner that recently left, which I just heard about, the Public Works employee that just left that I heard about tonight, were they allowed to take their personal items when they left? Or were they boxed up and sent downtown Madison? The whole situation is unacceptable. I'm sure the courts will agree, and I'm, I'm also sure that the residents of Fitchburg will also agree that the steps taken by the city were out of line and outside normal practices and a waste of their taxpayer dollars. As a matter of fact, I've spoken with several prominent members of the community who are absolutely appalled by the actions this city has taken against myself, especially in this situation. I expect that you'll approve this claim. What the hell?
Are you done?
Hey!
Are you done?
Why did I get cut off?
You haven't been cut off.
I'm not on the screen.
I don't know why your video is not on the screen, but we can hear you.
I don't give a shit about being heard.
Please watch your language.
Out of the meeting.
You're in the meeting right now. We can all hear you, I don't know why your video is not on.
Well, have them turn it on, I'll finish up.
The, you turn it on on your end, we haven't done anything on this end. If you have anything else, do you have anything else?
Once I get on the screen, I will.
It's on your side, so you need to turn it on your side.
Nope, I was kicked out, it just says so right here.
You're still on the meeting. We can hear you. You're being recorded.
Well, I want to be back on and in the meeting when the vote's taken.
Uh, you can watch it online, like everyone else in the public. All right, so it sounds like you are done with your...
Thanks for your cooperation.
All right, thank you very much. All right, would someone like to, uh, make a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
And then you have to read the whole thing, sorry. Sorry. Oh, you're on mute though now.
Hey, hold on. So, motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985, 1G, conversing with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategies to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is, it is or is likely to become involved. Insurance, uh, insurance claim for Kevin Cassidy, Jonathan Gilleski, and Patrick Marsh.
Second. Seconded by Randy, I guess. Uh, all in favor of moving into closed session, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, we are going into closed session. Reconvene into open session.
I'll make a motion to reconvene back into open session.
Second.
Second.
Sarah, seconded by Shannon, all in favor of reconvene in open session, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, discussion, action, possible action on insurance claim for Kevin Cassidy. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to deny Kevin Cassidy's insurance claim.
Second.
Seconded by, motion by Sarah. Any discussion? See none? All in favor of denying, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? And then abstention? Julia, Julia's abstaining? All right, uh, discussion, possible action on insurance claim for Jonathan Genki.
Motion to deny. Second.
Randy, seconded by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor of denial, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor, I want to recuse for the first one and the second one.
Yep.
And the third one, okay?
Yep. All right, uh, so that, and anyone against that? All right, so that is denied. Uh, discussion, action, is there a motion for this next H?
Move to deny.
Seconded by Tom, motion by Joe, seconded by Tom. Any discussion? All in favor of denial, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
In favor, say nay? And then Julia, are you abstaining on this one too? Are you recusing yourself, right?
Correct.
All right, thank you. All right, then we are through the agenda. Next committee, the whole meeting is tomorrow. What's on the agenda, Julia?
One second. So tomorrow we have a by committee, is going to do a presentation and then the second hour, uh, we are going to have the findings of Lake Barney, Stormwater Management Study. So, and this is an important presentation, uh, so please attend. It's affecting District Four, um, we have some findings from the study. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And the next council, council meeting is in three weeks, which would be the last meeting of this council, even though it's after the election, this council does one more meeting. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Moved by Joe, seconded by Tom, all in favor of adjournment, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? All right, we are adjourned.